Recording now.
Okay, so, welcome everyone. This is the June 11th, 2020 Town Monroe Planning Board Workshop Meeting. Noreen, would you please do a roll call of who's in attendance from the planning board?
Bonnie Fransen.
I'm here.
Lisa McQuade.
Here.
Jeff Manson.
Here.
Jason Sierinski.
Here.
John Allegro.
Here.
Pat Shea.
Here.
And Anthony Caro is absent.
Not joined us, so with that, we can conduct business as we have a forum. Everyone, I'd like to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Jeff, where was our flag? There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Republic.
Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Just for all.
All right. Returning projects. First item on the agenda is Kupo Mathi, Round Lake subdivision. Do we have someone here in attendance for that? Let me see a hand.
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes. Are you Rose Ellen?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and is your engineer here in present?
I don't know. He was going to.
I see him. I see him. Sean, it's John Locke.
Right.
Okay, John, are you here? You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm not sure why it's not showing my image here, but okay, I'm here.
Okay.
All right.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, Sean, perhaps you could put the map up and, John, you can give us status of where we are and then we can go through comments. We also have this evening present, of course, our attorney, Ashley Torrey, and our engineer, Sean Arden.
Okay, essentially, this is taking three existing lots and just reconfiguring them. What you will end up with is lots that are actually much closer to what would be desired for conforming lots. The two existing properties that face out onto I'm still actually reading my own map here right now. The main road will be made larger. Those lots are also ones that rely on septic. The lot, there's a long skinny lot that goes all the way down to the lake and is accessed through right of way. That lot will be made smaller, but that is also a lot that is actually on a sanitary sewer service. There were a number of comments at the last meeting regarding certain things that it was desired to see. I believe we've represented everything. We've provided topography. We've clarified certain things with respect to the lot layout. We've provided the appropriate easements and their meets and bounds. I don't really think that there's that much else to it. It's simply a lot line change application.
So with that, Sean, were you able to do a review and do you have comments?
Yes, I do have comments. Just a few minor cleanup items. First, I think it was noted last time if the applicant can just confirm possibly by the previous, if there is a previous subdivision map on the pre-existing non-conformities, none of them are getting worse, but if you see in the bulk table, the one yard setback for the first lot, which is the lot that fronts on the lake. And then the front yard setback are both pre-existing non-conformities. Like I said, none of them are getting worse with this, you know, with the proposed lot lines, but you know, we would just like to see that that was documented previously. I have a question about the right of ways that are shown for proposed lot one, which are shown here and here, and whether or not they are proposed or existing.
They're existing.
They're existing, okay. And if I didn't see the meets and bounds on either of them, you know, if they were close, could be provided. The topography was shown on here. There are the numbers for topography, but I don't actually see the topographic lines through the site, which is a requirement for the zoning code. And then the plan has to be set by land surveyor. And I don't believe it was determined or not a public hearing will be required.
So I think with that, Ashley, what is the procedure at this point? And then I'll open it up to any planning board comments.
Sure. So the first real issue is whether it could be classified as a lot line change. And one of the things that needs to be a condition of that is whether it doesn't create any parcels that are at variance with the bulk table. So an issue came up at the last meeting as to whether the front yard is actually correctly labeled as the front yard because so if, right now, I don't know if Sean, if you could zoom in, but they're labeling the front lot line as off of that west, I believe it's West Wind Drive to the right. So the pre-existing non-conformity for lot one is right now a side yard, but as a result of the new configuration, the new layout, that's no longer going to be a side yard. It would be a rear yard unless the actual front yard is really a different lot line, which the other possibility is that it's the lot line by the right of way, because the way your code defines front lot line, it depends on either a street or access point. So we really need to talk to Ben about that. I think we discussed this a little bit at the last meeting, but we need to, I don't I don't think the applicant talked about it with Ben, so we could reach out to Ben and talk to him about that and see what would actually be the front lot line. So that's the first question, because if it needs to be, if it can't be classified as a lot line revision, then it would have to, I guess, be a re-subdivision.
Yeah, and I think, so, remind me, proposed lot one, with the way that it's being reconfigured, it won't front to a road, correct?
Yes, it'll have this, I guess, right of way that that's how it gets its access, but it won't have any actual street frontage.
So
It doesn't have any street frontage now. Now, though, either.
Well, it has all the way on the right. That lot extends all the way.
Technically, it has frontage, right?
Although it's not where it gets its access from right now, that's considered frontage.
Sorry, I'm trying to see the existing lot, figure out what existing lot layout, what it looks like.
Basically, it comes to a point that meets the common right of way with the other road up there, but it has zero frontage.
It has no frontage.
So it doesn't front to hillside, then? You're saying it comes to a point?
Comes to a point, that's it.
Yeah.
And then West Wind Drive is a private driveway?
That's correct.
And that was created via whatever the subdivision was at that time?
I don't know.
That's been there for a long time.
Yeah. Let me give you a little history on the subdivision. The only subdivision that I'm aware of being filed is the one that would concern lots two and three, the existing lots there. The lot one, even the long extended version out, I'm not aware of that being part of a subdivision. And the other issue with respect to, there has been a change in the property boundary after that subdivision. Somehow, in the process of subdividing, they didn't take the road widens. They weren't offered in the subdivision, they weren't taken. There were subsequent deeds granting road widens and giving them to the town of Monroe. And that's why you now have a shortage in the front setback on the two existing houses. So that's not going to show up on the file map, but I can certainly provide the deeds for where the property was conveyed to the town of Monroe.
So you're saying the deeds were conveyed to, for Round Lake terrorists?
That's correct.
So it might be that maybe it was all for dedication but never accepted?
No, it eventually ended up being taken. I'm not entirely sure what prompted them kind of getting back to it later, but the subdivision plaque does not have an offer of dedication on it. It seems to have come up as a later issue. Honestly, the only way I happened to notice it is that it was reflected in one place on the tax map and I went looking back to prior owners and found a deed from the prior owner granting that out to the town.
What's the tax? It's 328?
Let me look at my map a little closer here. You've got the one that is jointly owned is yeah, I believe that's 328. And the other two are 642 and 643.1 for the existing tax lots.
We didn't even know they did that, yeah.
All right, so Ashley, I think you were gonna, did you go through the process and comments at this point?
Not yet. So that was really the first one, because we need to the process, obviously, it's going to be different if it could be classified as a lot line revision versus a subdivision. So that's really the first question. Again, it's, Sean, it also noted to confirm that whatever non-conformities are pre-existing. We talked about the easement a little bit. I think on the plan, it shows the easement detail, but then where you see the actual line, that should actually refer to the easement a little clearer, just so that's at the top there. One of the comments from the last time that I don't see that was resolved was the reference note number two, the deeds were not the current deeds. So I could give you, and I think I had sent them a while back, but I could, again, email those, just the the current deed, book and page numbers. And another, just minor comment for reference note three, if you could add the the map date, so map 2261 filed 5/19/1967, and then map 3394 filed 2/27/75. That way, you know what year they were filed, so you're able to find those.
Planning board, do you have any comments?
So I had a chance to drive out, ask the property last weekend, and my question for the applicant is, so it looks like behind the two houses where the property line would be extended if if the application is granted, it's fairly woodsy back there behind both houses. And I'm sort of wondering what future uses you all have planned for the additional property if it's granted to be added to your lots?
I'm not going to do anything.
Me either.
Because we own that already now. We've never really, we don't do anything with it.
So you don't have any changes planned other than the lot lines? No building?
Yeah, with just changes in the lot lines.
Thank you.
Who is the second person communicating? I know Rose Ellen's on. Who's the other individual?
Don Maffey.
Sorry?
You don't Maffey.
Okay, thank you. Planning board members, any other comments? Um, as far as the lot sizes themselves, John, we have a net lot area requirement where you have to subtract out any environmental constraints. The map itself isn't showing, you know, topography or, you know, anything with regard to any features that might be present. Are there any steep slopes, wetlands? Or what's the nature of the property overall?
I don't believe there's anything that would qualify as a wetland on it. It is relatively flat. There's nothing of any significant grade on here. I'm not sure why the contours didn't show up on your PDF. I have a copy of the one that I sent here and I can see the on another computer I'm looking at, I'm seeing the contours, but
Yeah, it's interesting, because at the very top of that map, it looks like there are contours.
Yes. I see what you have reflected on the screen. I have the map itself that I sent it from, the file I sent it from, and I'm seeing the contours on it. So I'm not sure sometimes what happens with PDFs, but I will look into that. I don't think we have anything of any significant grade on this. It's a relatively flat parcel.
Okay. Um, so Ashley, what would the next steps be? I guess we have to get some input to determine whether we can treat this as a lot line revision versus a subdivision?
Yeah, that's really the primary question, and that'll then dictate the process.
And if we have a lot line, then revision, we don't have to have a public hearing?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so that's going to be
In line of a process, if it's a lot line revision, I just it's just not clear that we could fit that into that yet.
So because we don't know yet, is there a way to almost tentatively set a public hearing in the event that a public hearing is required? We'd have to do seeker before that, before we actually open it up, but if we don't set anything now, you know, that's going to take us into our next meeting where we'd make a determination and then we will set a public hearing. So is there a way to expedite that in the event that, again, we do need a public hearing?
So, not really, because it's going to be too different. So for purposes of seeker, if it's a lot line change, it's a type two, but if it's subdivision, it's going to be an unlisted action. So unfortunately, I think we're going to have to just wait till the next meeting and hopefully have that hammered down.
Okay. Maybe it's possible, depending on what our agendas look like for next month, if we get that determination at our Thursday workshop. And we have other items on our Tuesday agenda, you know, maybe we could do it where it's Thursday and Tuesday, just to keep the process moving along. Is there enough time to notice a public hearing if we have our Thursday workshop to then have something on a Tuesday or not really?
Probably not. It depends, sometimes the way the weeks fall, there might be enough, but
Luckily, it does. The second Thursday, there's actually a full week in between the, you know, the second Thursday and the third Tuesday.
Okay.
I don't know offhand, though, your notice requirements. That would be, more than you would know that.
I believe it's a week from what I read today.
Okay, so then it would have to be
Out by the Tuesday, you know.
Yeah, we may have time then.
Right.
So then, Sean, do you actually have a comment memo?
Since this is a workshop, typically, we don't, I mean, I have a memo prepared. I could start, but I'd have to clean it up a little bit first.
All right, so, yes?
Sorry, I was unmuted and I couldn't get myself unmuted. For publicizing, they need to mail 10 days prior to the public hearing, and I have to get it in the paper a week before.
Okay.
So having it July 9th to July 21st, I don't think is going to give us
We're really very close. Well, we can be prepared if we're prepared.
I can be prepared, and then I can give it to them on the 10th. They can, by the 11th.
Right, they'd have to get it out right away.
Right, I'd have to get it in the paper on the 10th to be in the paper on the 14th. It's close. They usually ask for five days, but they have done it shorter than that.
So let's do this. I mean, we have some cleanup items. Sean, if you could put your comments into the memo, send it all to us and to John. And we'll put this on our workshop agenda for July. And if it's a lot line revision, then we don't have to have a public hearing and we can move on. You know, and if that's determined between now and that workshop, Ashley could perhaps start to craft a resolution. But if it looks like we have to go in the public hearing direction, then, you know, we just put the applicant on notice that there's going to have to be a real quick turnaround time as far as getting notices out if we want to attempt to have the public hearing on our regular meeting date. Does that sound reasonable, board members? Any questions, comments? Okay?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
All right. So I think that's how we'll handle it. Let's see, you know, what I guess Ben comes back with as far as a determination, and then we'll know what direction we're going on, which path. John, do you have any other questions?
No, do you have any problem if I go meet with Ben to try and get this clarified? Because I think there are some issues with respect to the setbacks on lot one. And I just want to make sure he has a clear understanding what the easements that exist are and whose they are.
The town hall is not open to the public yet.
Okay, I'll make contact with him. We'll do it virtually.
Well, that's what he's been doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would email him. And then, you know, I would just ask that you include Ashley and Sean, just so they know when they're in the loop of what's going on.
Okay.
All righty.
Yep.
Anything else?
No.
Sean, Ashley, you're good? Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, applicants, and we will see you again on on our Thursday meeting in July. What date is that, Noreen?
What day? What is the date?
Noreen, what's our July meeting date?
Sorry, my, July 9th.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll see you then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So with that, our next item on the agenda is Monroe Commons. I see Joel Mann is here. Is Jay Myrow here?
Jay is not attending today. He has a meeting.
Okay. Hi, Caleb.
How are you?
Good. Who else is joining you? Anybody else that we need to add?
It should be us, Joel, and possibly John Dolbrin. He's our planner.
Yeah, I think I see the name John, so it's probably John Dolbrin. John? John, can you hear us? You're muted at this moment. Do we have a muted Sean, or he's, oh, there we go.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you're on.
Yeah, I'm on, and I can see everybody. I don't know if you can see me.
Nope.
Okay.
But that's okay.
All right.
As long as we can hear you.
Yes.
All right. So with that, who's going to take the lead as far as providing an overview summary of where we are? And then we can kind of turn it over to Ashley as far as where we are in the process, the secret circulation, timeframe as far as lead agency notice, declaring ourselves, you know, lead, and you know, discussing the part two EIF. And then I have just a few comments on consultants. I have to still put the table together of who we're looking to retain. I believe you all did receive some qualifications from the potential planning consultant that would oversee the whole process, but we'll get into that after Caleb and Joel give us an overview. So with that, do we want to put up a map, Sean? And you're muted, just so you know.
Yeah, we can put up the map. In terms of the actual plan, obviously, you know, we have not submitted anything different prior to April 27th. Just as a summary of the last planning board meeting, that was to confirm that the board had sent out a notice intent to initiate the secret process and discuss what was going forward. I know you guys had said you did send it out and you needed to wait 30 days back before you could declare yourself lead agency. So purpose of us coming here tonight was just to continue that discussion, make sure that, you know, lead agencies declared and I guess go forward on your team of consultants. I mean, the plan itself is not, obviously, it's not changed.
So with regard then to secret circulation and where we are in the process, Ashley, do you want to give an overview of that?
Sure. So we circulated the notice of intent on May 11th, so we're just at that, I think it's the maybe 31st day. So we did receive some comments. I think they've all been consents, maybe a couple of comments about the project, but there hasn't been any objections, not that I'm aware of anyway. I don't know if Maureen's received anything, you know, since the last thing she sent us, but that's where we are with that. So the 30 days has passed.
Um, so with that, should we pass a resolution this evening, just confirming we're now lead agency? Do we need to?
Sure. So you could do a motion to assume lead agency status?
Okay. So I will make a motion that the town of Monroe be come the lead agency for the Monroe Commons project, there having been no comments that would challenge that.
The town of Monroe Planning Board.
The town of Monroe Planning Board, thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Jeff seconds it, and Noreen, could you do a roll call?
Bonnie Fransen.
Aye.
Jeff Manson.
Aye.
Jason Sierinski.
Aye.
John Allegro.
Aye.
Pat Shea. Lisa McQuade.
Aye.
And Anthony is absent.
All right, with that, the motion passes, and the Town of Monroe Planning Board is now the lead agency for this proposed action, which means we coordinate the entire seeker review with all the other involved agencies. Ashley started to draft a part two document, which helps to start to define what we might be looking at in terms of potential impacts. And then Ashley, is it based on the part two EAF and our review? Is that when we make our determination of significance?
Yes, so it'll be based on the EAF and any other information that you might need in order to make that determination.
And so essentially, with the determination of significance, we as a planning board would either issue a positive declaration, which means that this project is one that's more likely to have an environmental impact, and therefore, we would require that the applicant prepare an environmental impact statement. Otherwise, if we don't think there's going to be a significant impact, then a negative declaration would be issued. If there is a positive declaration, we enter the whole seeker EIS process, and that would commence with developing a scoping document. And the scoping document is essentially an outline of what the content of the environmental impact statement will be. And so, you know, we really want to get on the record, you know, as we talk about the part two, and as we move through the process, what the potential impacts are if we go in that direction. So in terms of the part two, I think we're still waiting for some information to fully fill out the questions. But I think we could start to review the part two EAF with the planning board. So the board has a sense of what those questions are, what the potential impacts are, and then we can talk about whether we think that you know, we would change any of the responses or whether we want to ask the applicant questions in terms of, you know, additional data they may have. So, Ashley, you had sent the part two? Is it okay, is it appropriate to go through that now?
Yeah, if you want to, if you want to start going through it, it's, you could certainly do that. I think Sean, do you have that? You could share it or?
Yes, I'll share it. Trying to find a revised one.
I think that's it. So, board, this is the part two EAF. And Ashley has been essentially helping to fill it out for us based on the data and information that's been submitted to date by the applicant. And essentially, the part two EAF consists of a series of questions and criteria to determine whether any potential action would have a, no impact, a small impact, or a moderate to large impact. And, you know, the more moderate to large impacts that you check off, the more likely you go into the direction of, you know, this project potentially having a significant adverse impact and, and the need for an environmental impact statement to look at those impacts comprehensively. So the first question on the EAF is impact on land. The proposed action may involve construction on physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. Of course, that's a yes. Action may involve construction on land where depth of water table is less than three feet. And just to explain, the instructions to the part two EAF says that if you, you meet or exceed that threshold, then it advises that you check the moderate to large box. So in looking at soil information for the depth of water table, it is in fact at times 18 inches deep, 24 inches deep, you know, wetlands are at the surface. So moderate to large has been checked off. And board members, if you have any questions or if you, you know, think that something should be, you know, moderate to large instead of no or small or vice versa, you know, please speak up. Proposed action does involve construction on slopes 15% or greater, that's checked off. And proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or within five feet of existing ground surface. So I have a question for the engineers or the representatives, has, has any kind of geotech been done at this point? Is there bedrock that's close to the surface? Does the potential exist to be able to grade the site? Blasting may be necessary?
Site is able to be graded. I'm not, we haven't done any full geological testing yet, but to my knowledge, it should be able to be graded, at very least within that five feet of existing ground surface.
And I want to add on, on the next property in the VMG project, we did, we did a lot of testings all over the place. We didn't find any, any rock on it or anything to concern. So I know it's a different property, but it's giving a little bit background to the neighborhood.
Yeah, it was interesting. Go ahead.
I, I was going to say, my only concern is that the rear of the property where we're getting close to a 40 foot cut.
Yeah, I, I, I think there's a question whether bedrock may actually in fact be encountered with that size of a cut. Also, in looking at the geological maps, and you know, I know I'm looking at secondary source data, so it's not precise, but right there through the property in that vicinity is where you kind of go from one geologic group to another. And I don't know if that has significance as far as the bedrock characteristics there, but in my mind, C is kind of open still. And I would err on the side of if there's a 40 foot cut, that in fact you may encounter bedrock, which might place it in the moderate to large impact. So again, that one's open in my mind. Excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. Sean, I think you had some thoughts on that.
Yeah, again, with the, you know, close to 40 foot cut in the back, or, you know, the rear of the property, I, I don't think there's enough fill in the front that would be able to, you know, not have to have an export greater than 1,000 tons, but maybe Caleb sent a little more research on that.
At this time, we haven't done a cut fill analysis of the site, but that will be something that we'll be doing in the future, provide.
So I think if we think even generally that the potential exists for there to be more than 1,000 tons, given again, the amount of grading and cut that'll be involved, then, you know, on the next iteration of the EAF part two, I'd rather be conservative and then check off moderate to large if we're, if we're approaching the threshold and we don't have specifics on that. E, in terms of proposed, proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year in multiple phases. Joel, what's the timeframe for construction? Can this entire project be constructed in one year?
It's, it's a good question. I will, I cannot answer this question. I will consult with, there is a contractor onboard and I will discuss with them the schedule of construction. If this is possible, I will let you know.
Okay, so that was sort of an open, open question at this point. Proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal. You know, obviously, there'd be a lot of grading going on, so that's moderate to large impact. Proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area. We are not along the coast, so that's not applicable, so that's a no. And then other impacts, the proposed action involves significant grading. So obviously, this is a big project, a big building, so that was identified as moderate to large. Impact on geological features. Proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site, cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, caves. The DEC, I believe, actually does identify unique geologic landmarks and, and, you know, physical, physically significant locations. And I would agree, this project is not in an area with unique geological features. And again, if anyone disagrees, you know, just please feel free to comment. Moving on to three impacts on surface water. So there is a stream and a wetland system that runs through this property. So, you know, would it affect wetlands or other surface water bodies? I believe the applicant has indicated that some fill will be required. Is that correct, Caleb?
Yes, there will be some areas of the wetland that'll be filled and we will be providing one-to-one mitigation.
And then what's happening with the stream?
With the stream? That is a good question, Tom, I'm going to look at the.
Caleb, I think we'll need to discuss with the, with the wetlands guy, we did this. I, I don't think it's a stream, it's not a classified stream. He has some couple areas where you find, but I'm not sure, we'll check on that, but I'm not sure if we have a stream on the site.
Yeah, I was looking at maps and it would appear that there's a defined stream channel that shows up on aerials. But I haven't been deep into the site, so, you know, again, I'm relying on aerials at this point, like Google, Google Earth. And so I think that's something to check, but, you know, I think there is a stream that's feeding the wetlands and then extending down toward Mininger Road.
Well, got clarification on that.
Great. So proposed action may create a new water body, that's no. I mean, there are probably stormwater basins that'll be created. Is that the case, Caleb?
In terms of stormwater management, we will probably be using some forms of forest pavement and some underground storage.
Okay, so not surface?
At this time, no.
Okay. May result in an increase or decrease of over 10% or more in the surface area of any body of water that's not proposed. May involve dredging more than 100 cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body. How much disturbance is proposed to the wetland? Do we know about how much will be filled?
Approximately 20,000 cubic feet. And again, we'll be providing one-to-one mitigation for that in another section of the wetland.
All right, so I guess 20,000 cubic feet, what is that?
I'm sorry, not cubic feet, I meant square feet, my, my bad. My bad, not cubic, sorry.
All right, so we'll have to see if that, again, if we're, if we're disturbing 100 cubic yards of the wetland, but regardless, and even though it says no or small impact, this is what I don't like about the new part two form. You know, certainly there's an impact, you know, but it may not meet that threshold. Proposed action may involve construction within or joining freshwater or tidal wetland or in the beds, banks of any other water body. This is what we've just been speaking of, and that is a moderate to large impact. May increase turbidity in a water body either from upland erosion one-off or by disturbing bottom sediments. That one in my mind, you know, could be a moderate to large, that in the absence of, you know, mitigation and project improvements, you could have that happen to the onsite wetlands. But at a minimum, there is, I think, an impact. I don't know if anybody wants to opine on that at all. We can leave it there for now and then revisit. Proposed action may include construction of one or more intake for withdrawal, draw of water from surface water. I don't think that's happening. You're not proposing any kind of fire suppression for the wetland. It, does it hold water where you would use it for fire purposes? Or because you're on water, you're just going to sprinkler the building? And you have to because of the size of it.
I don't think that, that's not something that we've gotten to at this point. I mean, I don't, I'm quite, repeat what you were asking.
Right, I, I'm asking, sorry, I'm asking whether there would be a need to draw water from?
Oh, from the wetlands? No.
Yeah.
No, there won't be, where all of our water is being drawn from two wells, two private wells.
Okay. G, action may include construction of one or more outfall for discharge wastewater to surface water. That's not the case, that's a no. Proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge or siltation. That's a large, moderate to large impact, given the amount of grading that's occurring. Proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site. Again, that's a potential moderate to large impact, given the amount of grading. Proposed action may involve application of pesticides or herbicides in and around the water body. I think in general, you know, they're going to be paved surfaces, so I don't know that you're going to do much in the way of application of pesticides or herbicides for landscaping, so that's likely to be, you know, no to small impact. Proposed action may require construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities. You're connecting to Orange County sewer district, so you're not introducing or expanding anything. So anybody have comments on that?
Bonnie?
Yes.
In relation to the question on the streams, in the EIF part one, EH, section four, for each identified regulated wetlands and water body on the project site, please provide the following information, and under streams, there is an identified stream. It's identified as H60-95, and it's a classification C stream.
So I think that's the, that stream is likely on the site, and that's probably what I'm observing on aerials. I will say with the caveat that when you fill out the EAF, there's usually a buffer area, what they call a buffer area around the parcel. So it may identify a resource that may actually just be off the site, but I do think in this instance, there is a stream. So, well, again, we'll examine that further. Thank you, Jeff. So, impact on groundwater. Proposed action may result in newer additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater and aquifer. The response is yes. May require new water supply wells or create additional demand on supplies for existing water supply wells. So you are going to install well, so, and, and given the size of the project, this is filled out, filled out as moderate to large. Water supply demand from the proposed action may exceed safe and sustainable withdrawal capacity rated the local supplier act for. That's going to have to be evaluated as part of a hydrogeologic study, but right now it's checked off moderate to large. Proposed action may allow or result in residential uses in areas without water and sewer services, that's not applicable. There are no residential uses proposed. May include or require wastewater discharge to groundwater, that's not proposed. May result in the construction of water supply wells and locations where groundwater is or suspected to be contaminated. For now, the response is small, no to small. Ultimately, when the wells are tested, they'll have to go through a full water quality testing protocol, which will in fact indicate whether or not there are any contaminants in, in the groundwater. Proposed action may involve commercial application of, oop, just skipped one. Proposed action may require the bulk storage of petroleum or chemical products over groundwater or in aquifer. Joel, in terms of heating and cooling systems, you're, are you, is there gas in front? Caleb, is there gas that you're going to connect to and electric?
We have electric, but there's no gas here. You can see the property behind from my windows there in the back. So I'm, my building doesn't have any natural gas, but the project next to it, VMGs, is the orange rock and installing gas into this road, so we will get that gas. Hopefully, at the point we will get to the constructor's building, we hope to have gas.
So, at this point, you don't, so if you, for whatever reason, if gas couldn't be supplied to this particular project, do they know how they would, what kind of heating energy system they would use? Would they use propane? Would they use oil? I mean, how would you, electricity?
Electricity will use a regular electricity. We have the, there's orange rock and main lines running across and then a direct.
So you don't expect to have fuel on site, any kind of oil or?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Proposed action may involve commercial application of pesticide within 100 feet of potable drinking water irrigation sources, small to, no to small. And then other impacts, based on mapping, the site is within the Rampe River Basin aquifer system sole source aquifer. So any activities within it have the potential to impact the groundwater quality, so that was responded to as moderate to large. Impact on flooding, may result in development on land subject to flooding, the response is yes. And actually, if everyone could just look A through F, the one item that's identified as moderate to large impact may occur is the proposed action may result in or require modifications of existing drainage patterns. So obviously, with a lot of grading, if the stream is there, if it gets placed underground, you know, you're changing the natural drainage patterns that exist on that site and in that area. Otherwise, the property is not within the 100 year or the 500 year floodplain or a floodway. And there isn't a dam as far as I know on that site. The wetland doesn't have any kind of earthen embankment, it's not like water that's held back by anything, Caleb? It's just a wetland?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay, so it's not a dam in the sense of it's not identified by DEC. I was just wondering if there's anything earthen that's holding it up. A lot of the little water bodies in Monroe, being the lakes region, some of them were just created. And so, you know, they could have something that's, again, like an earthen dam, but I don't know that that's the case here, and that's something we can look at further as we get into the, the project. Impact on air. May include a state regulated air emission source, answer is yes. At this point, in terms of greenhouse gases, you know, all of this would be examined as we go through further environmental review. um as we go through further environmental review, but really, um, you know, the proposed action is going to introduce traffic um that will uh contribute to air pollution pollutants from that traffic, and um given the amount of grading that's occurring on the site, there is a potential for construction activities to result in fugitive dust and, and similar emissions. Uh, so, um, those were the areas where moderate to large was checked off. Um, but I think, you know, we need a little more information in terms of um the fuel that will uh serve this project, um, and we can respond more to those air quality questions. Impacts on plants and animals. Uh, so this one, um, you know, we started to fill out, uh, having said that, we did not yet receive any correspondence back from the New York State DEC. Um, Caleb, been doing the due diligence for the property, did you ever reach out to DEC and get some kind of letter from them in terms of potential permits that would be required and any species that came up on the, on New York Natural Heritage Program list?
We had not heard anything from them, uh, when we ran the environmental resource mapper for the EAF, um, it mentioned that, I believe, the Indiana bat was part of this area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but outside of that, I don't have any knowledge of any types of endangered animals in this area.
Okay, so for the time being, um, because of the Indiana bat, um, you know, typically in our area, northern long-eared bat. Yeah, yeah, so the NLEB and, and Indiana bat, um, A and B are checked off as moderate to large because you will be um, again, doing a lot of grading and woodland removal, so the potential exists there to impact those populations. We can't really fill out C or D because we haven't gotten the list from New York State as far as species of special concern. Um, ultimately, um, you know, we would anticipate doing some kind of ecological report uh for this property. Uh, so, you know, what we've been able to check out off, uh, we have um, E, proposed action may diminish capacity of a registered national natural landmark, um, I think that one can be checked off as no. Uh, there aren't, I don't think, any national natural landmarks um in the vicinity. And then proposed action may result in removal of ground disturbance in any portion of a designated significant natural community. Um, was anything checked off on the, on the EAF?
No.
Did it show up in the EAF mapper? Okay, so that's probably a no as well. And uh, G, um, is checked off as potentially large as far as um habitat for, for a certain species. And H is checked off as large, conversion more than ten acres of forest, grassland, et cetera, locally important habitat. Uh, and I is no to small impact, again, this, this isn't the type of project that's really using um to succinct, to a significant extent in herbicides or pesticides. Uh, any questions so far, any comments? Anyone? So, A, impact on agricultural resources, this is not an agricultural property. Uh, maybe once upon a time it was, but not for a long time, so the response is no. Uh, aesthetic resources, uh, we checked off, uh, yes. And proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resources. Um, typically, when you look at the analyses, they talk about, you know, one mile to five mile radius. Um, and so we checked this off to be cautious because there may be trail systems associated with harem in, um, from which the site could be visible. Uh, proposed action may result in obstruction elimination or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views. Um, we don't believe that's going to happen. Uh, it is visible from publicly accessible vantage points, both seasonally and year-round, it's obviously very visible from New York State Route seventeen and Ninja Road, so those were uh checked off as moderate to large impacts. Uh, and D just gets into the um extent to which the property is viewed, whether it's routine or whether it's recreational or tourism-based activities, and both are checked off.
Bonnie, if I could just comment, just um as far as the, the visibility, and it's just remember going through this, that the project and the proposed action includes um the zone change too, so it includes increasing the height for the entire zone, it's not necessarily limited to this property.
That's a good point, Ashley, thank you for reminding us of that. So would also involve the other um site that's located, the other zone that's located over by um two weight and Route seventeen, I think that's where the other zone is that would be affected if the height is um increased for this particular zoning district.
Yeah, one, one property there has already a building with the whole zoning, what's basically the height that we are asking to be.
Right. Um, there, you're next to one of the, I think, the Orange and Rockland Lakes. Um, so again, you know, you are visible actually from uh, when I would from an area that's considered scenic. Um, so again, I think here in the end, um, you know, there is a potential to have a, uh, an impact. Impact on historic and archaeological resources. Um, from my perspective, uh, so when the um EAF was filled out, um, the responses in terms of historic or archaeological resources, there aren't. As far as I know, historic resources, um, by the, by the property or on the property. Um, however, archaeological resources, um, my expectation as a planning board member would be that there be some archaeological investigation. Um, the way that uh New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, the Historic Preservation Office maps resources as being within archaeological sensitive areas, it really reflects where um reports and studies have been done um on certain properties, so in other words, um you may fall within archaeologically sensitive area because nearby there was a property where it was determined that an archaeological site might have been present, or they may have done an archaeological investigation and found something. So if you're not included, doesn't mean that the potential doesn't exist, it just means the area may not have been surveyed. So, um, you know, for ten, uh, I think that's an unknown, I, you know, for archaeological, I wouldn't say no, I think it's something that has to be examined. Um, but again, I think in terms of historic, that's, that's um more uh a known uh determination that there really aren't historic resources, in particular in that location. Impact on open space and recreation, uh, the site is not used for recreational opportunities. Um, it's not officially identified as an open space resource on an open space plan, so the response was no. Twelve, impact on critical environmental areas, so critical environmental areas are actually areas that are specifically designated um, uh, by community in New York State DEC as having uh significance, so for instance, um, you know, Shongum Ridge uh out in Ulster County is a critical environmental area. The town of Way Weanda has um made all hills that are over a certain um elevation. Um, at, they've designated them critical environmental areas. Um, in the town of Monroe, we have not designated um this area as within a critical environmental area, so the response is no. Impact on transportation, uh, would it impact existing transportation systems? The answer is yes. Uh, this is a four thousand square foot building, uh, there is going to be a traffic increase, uh, we anticipate um that we would need to evaluate the potential traffic impacts associated with it. Um, the paved parking area, um, is it, what's the capacity, Caleb? It's over five hundred uh vehicles?
Right now, the total number of parking spaces, double check on the plan real quick. It's about
Including reserved?
Yeah, including the banked parking, it's about eleven hundred, I believe. In terms of paved parking itself, um, you know, a good chunk of it, we had, I, I guess I should mention this, we have prepared um a report for a type of grass pavers, where we've submitted to the building inspector for his interpretation. We're waiting to hear back on, you know, how he would interpret it as whether it would qualify as lot coverage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if it doesn't fall under that definition, uh, we'll be using that for a good portion of the pavement and for the parking area.
Okay.
Just a quick, that obviously, um, would also have to be, you know, subject to the planning board's approval, aside from the lot coverage issue.
Of course.
Um, but as far as, you know, when, for example, just strictly grass, I'm sure the planning board, you know, wouldn't uh go over something like that with a large parking lot, but just wanted to clarify, that'll be subject to their review.
Thank you, Ashley. Uh, proposed actual degrade existing transit access, um, that doesn't seem to be a small um or moderate to large impact. Degraded pedestrian or bicycle accommodations, there really aren't any on an injured road. Um, so that's on impact, and proposed action may alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods. That's really not anticipated in terms of, um, again, uh, the project, so that was answered as no. So really, the big issues are uh the traffic increase and um the amount of parking that'll be on the site. Um.
Bonnie, I, I just want to mention that we did receive a letter uh from Orange County DPW, uh, which they did indicate that a traffic study will be required by their office.
Okay.
For, for those of you who didn't receive that.
Yeah, that was one of the responses to the lead agency notice of intent. Um, uh, we did receive one from Woodbury, and actually, maybe, um, after we go through this, we can kind of, I don't know, Ashley, do you have a list of who we received comments from? Or Norine, do you have a list?
I don't have a list, but I have them all in a folder, so.
Okay.
I think it was the Orange County DPW, uh, Village of Woodbury.
Mm-hmm.
Um. The other, uh, Monroe joint fire, that was just a consent, and?
With a couple of comments and an email.
Okay, their email had comments.
And uh, or, Orange County, uh, DOH.
Yes, Orange County DOH had some comments too.
Okay, we haven't heard from the sewer district. Um, and this, again, we didn't hear from DEC, which, you know, um, given COVID, I think we have to give everybody a reasonable amount of time to respond to some of these requests. Um, that's only reasonable given the situation. So anyway, um, getting back to the part two, impact on energy, um, would it cause an increase in the use of any form of energy? Yes. Um, does it require upgrade to an existing substation? Um, we don't anticipate that. Um, you know, that'll be further evaluated, sort of what the energy needs are, again, for this project. Creation or extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve more than fifty single or two-family dwellings or to serve a commercial or industrial use. Um, uh, no or small, I don't know that the transmission or supply system is being um extended, you know, there will be uh the distribution system that'll, that this will have to connect to. Uh, proposed action may utilize more than twenty-four hundred uh megawatt hours per year of electricity, that's moderate to large. And may involve heating or cooling more than a hundred thousand square feet of building area when completed, that's moderate to large, because this is, um, I believe, close to four hundred thousand square foot building. Um, is that correct, Caleb?
Yes.
Right, so again, we have some moderate to large impacts there. Impact on noise, odor, and light, fifteen. Uh, proposed actually result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor light. Um, you know, certainly because of traffic and the introduction of the new building, we expect that sound above existing ambient noise levels may occur. Um, so that would be evaluated, that could be a moderate to large impact. Um, blasting within a fifteen hundred feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing home. Um, that's one, again, Ashley, um, there's that house, or sorry, that school that is to the northwest of the site, and so at this time, we don't know if there's going to be blasting.
Yeah, I think that's the question, there's definitely a school within the fifteen hundred feet. And there may be residences as well, but that's really a question about the blasting, whether there's gonna be a need for that.
Right, and if the, um, Sean, if the cuts in the back of the, of the property, right, to the rear of it, um, that's getting in closer proximity to that area where that building is. Um, so
That's correct.
Yeah, so that, that may change to moderate to large. Uh, proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day, this isn't the type of project that would generate really odors. Um, certainly there'll be refuse, but um not, um, any kind of significant about, significant odor generation. Proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties, this building um will be lit, it will be um utilized during the nighttime hours, so we need to ensure that um light levels are controlled, so that's potential moderate to large. May result in lighting creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions, that potential exists, so again, we'll want to look at the lighting patterns um and lighting uh plan proposal. Um, and having said that, just real quickly on energy, um, I think it would be, as we go through the process, to create a, a sustainable kind of site, um, there should be some consideration given the size of this building. Um, the potential to add solar, um, either solar rooftop or somehow solar uh canopies in the parking lot, but again, we have an opportunity to um have some positive environmental effect, and, you know, I would ask that the applicant explore whether the potential exists to incorporate some uh, energy conservation measures and sustainable measures. Um, uh, impact on human health, proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to newer existing sources of contaminants. Um, just a quick question, has uh the uh property owner, the applicant prepared any kind of environmental site assessment for the property? Um, that would speak to whether there's the potential for any, any kind of contamination or um, you know, solid waste debris to be on the site, any kind of investigation?
Uh, we have not at this time, however, I would say that, you know, I don't think that would be an issue for this project. Um, there's no, like, chemicals built, my knowledge, at least on the EAF, that, or any type of, you know, remediation um for this area. So, I don't see how that would be an issue, I don't believe.
Yeah, I, so my, you know, I wasn't sure if a phase one um ESA had been done. Uh, if there's any, again, a background, you know, just exploring, oftentimes, especially if you're gonna get a loan or mortgage, um, you know, you do an evaluation to see, you know, what might potentially be uh an issue. Uh, especially for a lender.
At this time, we haven't conducted that ESA.
Okay. Um, that's something we, we may want to look to, to get background, to get um some information, just to ensure that that's not a concern with this property. Um, you know, could be, could be a walkover, you know, make sure there hasn't been any kind of dumping that occurred at any time, et cetera. I think John knows all about that. So, and So, um, right now, if you look through, um, most of those questions do have to do with things like hazardous waste disposal. Um, uh, you know, environmental site remediation, et cetera, so for the time being, in the absence of information, we're saying it's not an impact, but I think we need uh further, um, again, information in that regard. Um, next, consistency with community plans, proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. Uh, it's checked off, yes. Uh, land uses components may be different from or in sharp contrast to current surrounding land use patterns. Uh, moderate to largest, uh, checked off. I think the primary question um has to do also, and, and in answering this, Ashley, um, it also, again, takes into consideration the change in zone with the building height. Um, so we have to consider that when we talk about consistency with community plans and, and zoning. Um, it's not gonna increase the permanent popu, population of a city, town, or village, um, this is a residential property. Uh, inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations, again, that's where zoning amendment's being requested to be able to accommodate the height. Uh, inconsistent with county plans or other regional Inconsistent with county plans or other regional land use plans, um, potential moderate to large impact. And otherwise density of development, um, low density development, those are all checked off as small to large. Again, if anybody thinks otherwise, those are the answers at this point in time. And again, there's, they're subject to further evaluation. Consistency with community character, proposed project is inconsistent with existing community character. It's checked off, yes. Proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facilities. That's not a concern. Proposed action may create a demand for additional community services. That's where we really need to reach out to the community service providers. Because this is a very large building, um, it will likely place a demand on services. That potential exists, so we need to evaluate that. See, this doesn't, um, affect affordable or low income housing. Again, this isn't a designated public resource. It doesn't affect a public resource. It is a very large scale, um, compared to predominant architectural character in the town. So that was identified as moderate to large. And then proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape. Obviously, right now it's forested and woodland and this would, um, be a very significant large building that would be introduced to the property. So it would change that existing natural landscape. So it was checked, yes. Is that the last, um, EAF question, I believe? So, um, you know, we know this is a very large project and, uh, based on the responses to the part two EAF, you know, to date, from my perspective, and we want the planning board, when we have more information to weigh in on, whether this is an action that's more likely to have a significant adverse impact and, um, is an environmental impact statement warranted. And I think that one is warranted. And that if we agree, we would, uh, end up passing, uh, a positive declaration. And then starting a scoping process where we get various consultants on board to, oh, to help review an environmental impact statement that is prepared by the applicant. And, and those consultants would review those areas that we've identified, um, where there could be a, a significant adverse impact. So you would have a planning consultant that would oversee the whole process. And, uh, you know, we would have a traffic specialist. We have our engineers, of course, we have our legal attorney. But we would have a hydrogeologist, um, since the wells being, uh, introduced on the site. You know, again, we would have, um, ecologists to look at any potential impacts given changes to the wetland system and the habitat there, um, et cetera. So I think we need a little bit more information from the applicant. As we went through the part two EAF to finalize some of those responses, I think we want to hear back from some of the agencies that may help us further fill out that part two EAF, um, and finalize it. And then perhaps next month, we could look to making our determination of significance. And talking about the consultants that we're going to retain and moving forward and starting to scope an environmental impact statement, um, if that is where the board thinks, uh, that is the direction we will go in, in, as the lead agency for this action. Ashley, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I mean, that's a really good, you know, outline of the next steps and the, the different options and, you know, I think we could, you know, we don't hear back from the, the DEC or some other agencies doing, we could always try to, you know, reach out to them and see whether we could get any feedback before the next meeting. And I think if Caleb, the applicant, could get us some information on those questions, some of them we went over tonight. And then hopefully we'll have enough information at the next meeting for you to go ahead and, and proceed with the determination.
Thank you. Um, Sean, any, uh, additional comments you want to raise?
Not at this time, you know, where, other than, uh, I know Caleb's touched on them, but we, we still have some outstanding items, uh, to proceed with the zoning aspect, but, um, you know, we'll look for better determination than others.
Okay. You know, I think one of the questions is, and maybe what it is, Ashley, is, you know, from my perspective, I think that the site layout can be further refined. You know, I have said that I think the parking, I would like to see something that's more tiered. I'd like to see more landscaping, you know, essentially, you know, this is a very large building and somehow in the best of all worlds, we'll integrate it more, um, so that it's not, you know, this highly visible building. It's one that's attractive, that's, you know, partially screen views, but, you know, again, trying to preserve some of the greenscape that's on that property. And I think we need to think about, um, you know, this is the, I think the layout that the applicant wants to pursue, but we may want as part of the scoping process and as part of the EIS, if one is, um, if, if one is required to maybe have some alternative concepts to examine as part, as part of an alternative analysis. Environmental impact statements have a section on alternatives. Ones that's, those alternatives still need to meet the objectives of the project sponsor. But they could be kind of different designs that also achieve other benefits. So I think we need to think through that a bit as far as the site layout. Board members, do you have any comments or questions for the applicant and its representatives?
Just real quick, Bonnie, I did have a question. When you speak about tiering the parking layout, what, what are you referring to in that respect?
It's really.
Having it on different levels of, uh, of the building.
So that I think it's more adapted to the terrain of the site and that, you know, I don't know if there's literally, um, open space, uh, areas or open space pockets that can be preserved between the tiers. It's just really trying to break up the expanse of parking in a way that we can get some real visual buffering and screening. And I think it's just, it's just something to explore as an alternative to the, um, again, the, the, the large parking mass that's being proposed. And, or mass parking and, you know, also looking to the building um, and its layout, are there alternatives that would, you know, again, in some way reduce the appearance of the massing, you know, I don't know if that's possible, given the size of it, but.
I was just gonna say, in regard to like tiering the parking, that is, uh, we have done that in a sense in that the parking in front is at the first floor, but as you go along the back of the building, you know, the parking then rises to a second floor level and then it rises up to a third floor level on the rear. So it's not like, you know, if you're picturing your head, it's not like, you know, it's just flat all across the board. It does rise up with the elevations.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of designs that I've seen at some of the corporate office parks out in Westchester County, you know, White Plains area. Where again, you know, the parking, when I think of tiered, does that, that tiering enables for there to be landscaping between each of the, kind of the parking sections, um, so that you have this screening that occurs as you progress up the hillside. And because of that tiering effect, you're really going to end up being able to minimize the visibility of a parking. So, uh, you know, and perhaps I'll get some photos of some examples of what I'm talking about so that it's more evident what I'm talking about and what I'm, I'm, I'm envisioning.
Okay.
Board members, questions, thoughts?
Bonnie, if I could, uh, chime in, this is Pat. You know, that property has some very beautiful stone fences and just from an aesthetic point of view, if there's, uh, and I don't know if you've thought about this or not, but if you could incorporate some of those stone fences or those stones, uh, uh, for aesthetics, uh, I think, you know, personally, I think it would be nice.
Yeah, I think that'd be a high-end quality look. Um, you know, if we look to the east at, I think it's Woodbury Junction. You know, that housing development, um, they took stone walls and they created stone walls along Ninninger Road that are very attractive. And certainly it would be a way of elevating the aesthetics of the property once it's developed. So that's a good point, Pat. Anybody else? All right. So, um, with that, I think we'll continue to the next workshop meeting. Caleb, you'll, uh, get to us, um, and, and John or Joel, any additional information that, that might exist with regard to this project. Hopefully we'll hear from a few more agencies. And then just a quick, quick question, Joel, when I was driving on Ninninger Road, on the right-hand side of your building, there is a driveway, a gravel driveway with a, um, gate in front of it. Is that your property or is that for this property?
That's the entrance for this property.
So how far has, does that extend back? Um, you know, have you really gone deep into the property? Because I think any of those kind of, um, improvements really need to be run by the planning board. Because at some point, if you're cutting and starting to, you know, get access into the site, or, you know, our concern would be that during the secret process, you're really not supposed to be disturbing. The land.
So what we did is, said, when I built my building, there was a, his entrance was partially on my property and actually property where I am used the entrance on his property. So we, we went to the, the planning board with the DPW. We maintained a new entrance from, for my property, for my building and they revised their entrance. So it was just like a coordination finishing the, my building and repairing their entrance. And the second thing was when, a couple of months ago, before we started, when we started to think about this project, we explored the option about wells. So we have a building permit for a well. There was an existing, years ago, you can see it that I cut through in the trees, there was, uh, a road. I don't have a map to show you, there was a road.
Kind of a loop road. Yeah, you, you can see it in the Google.
Right. So we followed basically that path and we got to the location where we choose that we have a well and we, uh, we have, we, we're working on a well. So it's basically on a test wells.
So has that loop road been graded and improved with gravel? Or not the entire thing?
No, and we didn't grade anything. It was actually graded. There was no trees on it. It was always, uh, being used like a water, I don't know, just it was, it was flat and we just, uh, put out stones on it to be able to have the trucks, the driller trucks to drive through.
Did this, did the stone area and what you laid down, did, does it go back pretty far into the property?
The property, yes, following the path of this road.
Okay. So, uh, you know, again, I just remind applicants that, um, if you're going to have to cut trees, if you're going to have to, you know, even for investigations, we want to know about it. You know, just so we're not taken by surprise. There is a benefit that if you did put gravel down, it'll be easier for us to get into the site to actually observe it.
Yeah, we can, we can get into the site through this entrance. But this was basically a couple of months ago before we started. And just what he saw here was just final maintenance on the entrance while I finished my building.
Okay. And, um, you know, again, we don't want to see necessarily disruption to the stream or to the wetlands as you're, you know, doing your investigation. So again, be mindful of that. And at some point, uh, we'll probably want to schedule some kind of field visit to get back into the site and, and see what's there.
Sure.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. So I think we've covered a lot of ground this evening. And again, we'll see you all, uh, on next, if we have the information. Get more additional information, we'll put you on the, uh, Thursday agenda for, for July.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Stay healthy.
Thank you, you too.
Next item on the agenda is Raywood Drive.
Yes, I'm here for it.
Okay.
Joel. Larry Taro, the project engineer couldn't make it, so I'm here to represent the project. We did a full submission, um, but the submission date to address all the, probably all the comments from the last planning board and the engineers' comments. And I hope that we, if the plan is enough, uh, to schedule public here and kind of, so we can move on.
Okay. Sean, do you have comments at this point? On the layout, on anything that's, uh, shown in terms of the engineering?
The most significant comments, which are just technical in nature, are on the SWIP, which I've prepared, prepared a separate memo and will share with, uh, the applicant. As far as the, um, I, I do have some other kind of, I guess more procedural comments, uh, with some technical as well. The, the first is, uh, obviously the, uh, applicant has prepared the SWIP. We've reviewed, um, procedurally, a stormwater maintenance agreement, uh, will have to be prepared. And reviewed by the, uh, board's attorney, um, for the proposed improvements for the stormwater, um, requirements. Again, about the, the water easements, uh, water and sewer easements proposed, uh, that easements will have to be prepared and, and reviewed by Ashley. Uh, and, and the meets and bounds should be shown on the subdivision plot. And less, sorry, what was that, Joe?
Yeah, I, I believe that the meets and bounds from the easements are actually on the plan, um, on the first sheet.
They are shown.
About that, we will prepare the documents and share it with the attorney.
The next comment I have is, uh, you know, we, we've previously, uh, received the application for connection to the Orange County Sewer District and that the board should receive that approved application when it's available. Last time we had talked at length, and maybe I can show or share the plan. We talked about, uh, maybe revising some of the layouts of the, uh, stormwater improvements. And maybe some of the sidewalks to try to save some of the existing trees.
Yeah, I actually was out there taking pictures a minute, sending them to myself so I can try and bring them up.
Board remembers, um, you know, these couple of trees here. The applicant did move these dry wells, uh, further down the page to, in an effort to save them. And, and they did provide some trees for screening, uh, you know, between the houses, uh, from one and three to two. And they've identified these, uh, trees to remain. I suggest that the applicant add a note that the trees to remain be protected by this, uh, tree protection detail, uh, during construction. You know, since there is significant grade, I shouldn't say significant grading, there is grading throughout the entire site, uh, proposed. And then I, I did have a chance, uh, to review the plan with the highway superintendent. He brought two things to my attention. First, there's a, an existing chain link fence shown through the right of way here. Uh, he suggested that that right of what, or that, uh, fence, uh, be taken out of the right of way and either rerouted or removed. He didn't take any exception to the, the trees within the right of way. However, uh, he suggested that, uh, a note be added to the plans that the trees be maintained by the, the homeowners. You know, in case they're damaged, uh, either during snow plowing or, you know, maintenance of the road. He, he, he didn't want to have the town be liable for maintaining those trees. And then my only other comment was about, um, the applicant did provide the. the applicant did provide the potential locations of the transformers for the electricity. And provided some correspondence with ONR that gas, as I understood it, was located on the opposite side of the street within Raywood Drive. I just suggest that the trenches, or, you know, the, the location of those proposed utilities be shown on the plan to try to minimize, you know, minimize the impact to the site.
Any questions, board members? Joel, do you have any questions or comments about what Sean has noted?
Oh, I'm basically, I'm with you with everything. We can address all the, all those comments.
Um, Ashley, do you have comments?
I do have a few. So the first was the garbage enclosure. I think that's new, that's been added. And I don't believe that's permitted to be in the front yards. So there's certain encroachments that are allowed in the front yards, but this wouldn't be one of them unless there's something there that I had missed. So I don't know if you could relocate that elsewhere.
I can look on the plan to relocate. I wasn't aware that it's pretty much from being in front here. Okay?
The next, so the plan needs to show the limits of disturbance and the bedroom count because your code provides that the limit of disturbance and the footprint height and bedroom count, that's going to be, you know, binding on any subdivision map. So that needs to be as, you know, consistent with your house relocation. So that needs to be clearly shown. The limits of disturbance and bedroom count. Procedurally, the board is going to have to go over, you know, either require or waive the public improvements as we've done, you know, with the prior subdivision. You're also going to need to address the recreation fees. Erosion and sediment control, there's specific notes that are required under section forty-six seventeen. Some notations that need to be added to the plans. That was forty-six dash seventeen.
Are those the house relocation notes?
No, those are already on there. These are some erosion and sediment control notes.
Okay.
And then the trees, so not all of the trees, unless I missed it, were identified. So you need to type either in some sort of legend or labeled on the plans. Again, you need the envelope of the planned disturbance. I think Sean touched on this a little bit about how you're going to protect the trees that are going to remain. So you need to show that you're supposed to have buffer zones around the trees that you're going to protect at fifteen feet. You're proposing to remove nine trees, I believe, and you're adding seven. So your tree preservation law requires replacing on a one-to-one basis or on a basis that's acceptable to the planning board. So you'll have to decide whether, you know, that's acceptable or you want the one-to-one basis. And you need to add the notes about, there's tree plan notes as well in fifty-seven eighty-four, I believe it's sub I, there's notes about penalties, things like that that need to be added. And then again, that's going to have to be referred to the Monroe Conservation Commission for comments as well. And as far as SEAKER, I did prepare a proposed part two for this project as well. And you would have to complete SEAKER before you could set a public hearing.
So board, do you want to go over that? Or do you want some of the changes made first before we go into the part two EAF for, for this project? What are people's preferences? Do we need a little more information before we take a look at the part two? Actually, while you're thinking about that, let me show you some pictures. I'm going to take over your screen, if that's okay. Am I able to do that?
You should have access now.
Okay. Sure. Okay, so can you all see this image?
Yes.
All right. So, um, there's this transformer box here. Is that reflected on the plans? This is the end of the cul-de-sac. And what happens is you get to the end of the cul-de-sac on Raywood. There's a lot of dirt and siltation happening over here. And I think it's because of the construction that's going on. I don't know if that's becoming a turnaround area. Next to eighty-one Raywood, the properties in the Village of Curious Joel and are building some multifamily, I think, housing next to it. And, and Joel, you've mentioned that. And so there's a lot of stuff going on as far as siltation that I think is coming from that other site. But I want to make sure that these are reflected on the plans in terms of that dead end. And there is a path, an informal path that exists right now that connects kind of the Raywood area to the larger Curious Joel community. It's informal. I don't know if that's going to continue to be in access in some way.
I'm trying to look on the survey. I see an electric box. So that you can see that the there is on a main electric line running in the corner. But I'm not sure, it looks like I see the box on the survey. It's way out of the right of way.
Okay.
But I will confirm that. I couldn't figure out, I can't figure out your picture exactly with the location, so I'll need to take a look at that.
Okay. Um, you should all be aware, along the frontage of the property, kind of going parallel with the road, there's a lot of stone there, very large boulders. And I don't know if that's natural or not, or if that's basically been placed there. I think it is natural. But Joel, in terms of that stone, et cetera, you know, I don't know if there's a way to kind of keep some of that. I know you have to put the driveways in, walkways, et cetera, but you know, if there's areas that can be in some way preserved that don't have to be graded out, it just might be nice to keep some of that. That's there. They're very large, so it's going to be a lot of work to move them. I think I had shown this earlier, but this was a little friend that I saw as we were out there. A ribbon snake. Lucky for you, it's not a timber rattlesnake. But that's, uh, that was out there on the site. And then this is kind of some of the woodland that's there. These two trees actually look like, you know, I don't see any leaf, leaves coming in. So I'm not sure if these are dead and dying back, but you know, there is some you know, growth that are similar to these trees on the site. And so, you know, it would, if possible, rather than grading some of it out, it'd be nice to keep some vegetation here. Through the tree line, you could see when I was talking about the area that is being developed for multifamily that's right next to the site itself. And then a second, I want to bring up one more image. And this is just a general question that I think would get, I guess, addressed by the highway superintendent. Let's see, hold on a second. So I don't know how to save to desktop. So this is kind of the condition of the road, the end of Raywood. There's a lot of potholes. It's really deteriorating. And, you know, as you can see, there's a lot of earthwork. There's been a lot of earthwork going on here. And I think what's happening is whatever's, you know, project work is going on on this site, they're coming into railroad. This is probably getting chewed up. There is a newer building also that I took a picture of that's just off of this image. Were you going to say, Joel?
Yes, I had a map. I was doing some work, like the building, probably the other building you want to show. And this road was like this for years, basically in a similar condition. It's probably, it's a cul-de-sac. There's not much people living here. Probably no one complained. And it's
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there was very much at the end of the cul-de-sac. I don't, again, I don't know if this is newer, if this just hasn't been maintained. I can say that there is, again, I saw dirt tracking. I don't know where, it can't be coming from your site because it's not developed. So it could be coming from this other site. But John, I'm just bringing it to your attention. Ultimately, with the construction of these units, I don't know what needs to be done. Some, something has to be done to improve the surfacing here.
Yeah, I'll touch with, I'll touch base with John to, you know, get time.
Okay. All right. So everybody, you want to look at the part two or you want to hold off till, till next month? What's your preference?
I don't have a problem looking at part two.
I agree with John. I, I don't think anything that's been brought up tonight is so significant that it should prevent us from taking a look at that.
Okay. So Sean, can you, you have the part two? Let me stop sharing.
This should be it for Raywood.
We're not seeing anything yet. I don't know if you're aware of that.
No, I'm sorry.
I can see it.
Can you see it?
Yeah, I see it.
I can see it. I can see it.
Okay. I see it now. Thank you.
Okay.
I had everybody's faces in front of it. All right. So because this action is an unlisted action, it does not require the long form part two, which we just went through with Monroe Commons. This is the short form, environmental assessment form, uh, part two EAF. So, um, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan and zoning regulation? In this instance, the impact is small or none. You know, they're not asking for zone changes or any kinds of area variances, et cetera. Will the proposed action result in the change in use of, of, or intensity of the use of the land? Yes, it's being converted to residential use, but you know, no more so and probably less so than what's around it. So it's more of a, you know, I think a smaller type of change relative to where the, the site is located. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of existing community? Given the surrounding uses there, again, buddy in Curious Joel, which is a much higher density community. You know, it's going to be consistent with whatever residential uses are there already. Actually, Joel, that building across the street, that newer building, what is that? You're, you're muted.
That's actually, I believe, it's a place of worship.
Okay.
Built up a couple of years ago, probably in two thousand and fourteen or fifteen.
Okay.
The place of worship.
Yeah, it looked like there were two doors on either side. So I don't know if it was almost like a duplex that got converted to a place of worship.
A brand new building.
Brand new building?
Yeah.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics of a CEA? Again, this isn't an area that's designated as a critical environmental area. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure, infrastructure for mass transit, bike wear and walkway? No, except that I guess the question is, do we want to? And does the site plan accommodate that informal connection? And that's just, that's not a major impact. I think it's just something we want to look at as far as the site plan. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable opportunities? In this instance, yes, additional housing will demand energy. You know, typically, these dwellings have to meet building code and energy code for efficiency. This isn't a project in magnitude of which, I think, you know, unlike Monroe Commons, you know, again, I think you have to build it to meet certain energy efficiency standards. It would be nice if they did put solar panels or considered solar on, on the rooftops. But this doesn't result in any, again, large impact. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? This is connecting to public water, correct?
Yes.
And in the, in terms of scale, this isn't providing or demanding a significant amount of water. And will it impact public or private wastewater treatment utilities? You're connecting to the existing wastewater there too, correct?
Yes.
So no impact there. Will the proposed action impair the character, quality of an important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resource? There really aren't any. It's surrounded pretty much by the village of KJ. So I don't think there'll be an impact there. Will the action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? This is really a small patch of undeveloped land that's otherwise surrounded by development. So it will eliminate natural resources, but again, I don't know that it, it doesn't constitute a large impact, given the nature of the development. Will the proposed action result in the increase of the potential for erosion flooding or drainage problems? Sean, there's, is there erosion control measures, et cetera, on the plan?
Uh, yeah, that's in my stormwater comments, but it will be.
Okay. And that's something, again, given the size of this project, you know, it doesn't need big stormwater facilities. I don't believe it's really, you know.
Yeah, there's not significant cuts or fills or anything like that.
Right. Uh, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? This is a residential project, so there really aren't, aren't any operational considerations that would count that kind of an impact. Is that the last question?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, so Ashley, who filled this out, did indicate note that site may contain Indiana battered wood and lumber. But there wouldn't be significant adverse environmental impacts because they'll comply with the applicable tree clearing restrictions that are required by DPC. And we're going to further explore whether any kind of trees can be protected in any manner on the site. So that's the part two EAF. Does anybody have any changes or comments on it? No? Shake hand, shake heads? Ashley, do you think it would be appropriate to, um, to then adopt a negative declaration or should we do a resolution for the next meeting? to then uh, adopt a negative declaration or should we do a resolution for the next meeting?
You don't need a formal resolution. It's up to the board. You could, first, you would have to assume lead agency status because you did circulate a notice of intent for this project as well. And I had not seen any um, any responses on that, but that was sent on the it uh, May sixth, so the thirty days has passed, but you would need to assume lead agency status. And then if you were inclined, you could um, issue the negative declaration by motion. I do see there's a, a space that needs to be added between applicable entry, but other than that, um.
Okay. So, um, then I will make a motion uh, that uh, the town Monroe planning board assume lead agency status uh, for the eighty-one Raywood Avenue uh, proposed subdivision. May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, John Allegro seconds. Uh, Noreen, could you do a vote call? For vote call?
Bonnie Franson?
Aye.
John Allegro?
Aye.
Jeff Manson?
Aye.
Lisa McQuade?
Aye.
Jason Sorinsky?
Aye.
Pat Shea?
Aye.
And Anthony is absent.
Okay, so with that, um, we are now the lead agency for this action. Um, given uh, you know, the project and review of the part two, um, I would like to entertain a motion uh, that the planning board issue a negative declaration, uh, which uh, means that we've determined that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and that an environmental impact statement does not need to be prepared. Um, we will continue through the site plant, oh, sorry, the subdivision review process will still, you know, make revisions and edits. Um, but in terms of seeker, we're not seeing anything that rises to the level of requiring an environmental impact statement. So with that, again, I'll make a motion um, that we adopt uh, a negative declaration for the eighty-one Raywood um, uh, Drive subdivision. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, Jason seconded it. Uh, Noreen, can you poll the board?
Bonnie Franson?
Aye.
Jason Sorinsky?
Aye.
Jeff Manson?
Aye.
Pat Shea?
Aye.
Lisa McQuade?
Aye.
John Allegro?
Aye.
And Anthony is absent.
So with that, uh, the motion carries. Uh, we've just issued a negative declaration for the project. Um, Ashley, is it time to set a public hearing? Uh, once we open the public hearing, what's the time within which or how long can it be left open? Uh, or should we get some more revisions to the site plan before we open the public hearing? Uh, sorry, the subdivision plan.
So it really is, is up to you. Um, after you close the public hearing, you'll have sixty-two days. Um, there's, and I, I'll check right now, um, as far as it's longer than I believe sixty-two days that you could keep it open for, but I think that, you know, the important thing is you don't wanna keep it open if you don't have to. It's best to have everything, you know, you're gonna want for the public hearing and that way, um, you know, you could open it with all the information and, and ideally close it the same night, but again, it's up to the board. Um, if you wanna wait for that additional information or if you wanted to set that for tonight.
Um, if I may offer, um, if you can do it that way, so if you can schedule it for the next meeting, subject to submission and addressing basically the comments from the tonight's meeting.
I like that idea. I was just about to suggest it.
Ashley, is that possible?
Is, is it possible to set it and then subject to?
Right, subject to.
Well, someone will need to, I guess, make that determination once the submission comes in and as long as, I guess, there's enough timeframe. I mean, as long as they're able to get the notices out, that's really the biggest thing.
So, um, Noreen, our notices have to be ten days, did you say?
Yes, they have to be out ten days before the meeting, so the July, we do the public hearings on the regular meeting, right?
Uh, yes.
So that's July twenty-first. They would have to mail them by July eleventh. Submittel for July is June twenty-fifth.
So it seems that there's time.
Oh, there's plenty of time.
For the uh, subdivision plan to be submitted and for Sean to take a look at it so that, um, you know, in terms of his comments and Ashley in terms of your comments, whatever's required to be shown on the plan, it can be added. I think the only question has to do with the trees. Um, does a conservation commission have to get out there? Can they do that as part of the public hearing process? Um, do they have enough time?
They do have thirty days, I believe, to review the plan.
Okay.
And obviously, I mean, in the current climate, I mean, it wouldn't be unreasonable if they need, you know, more time, sure. Um, but to answer your first question, the public hearing has to be closed within a hundred and twenty days after being opened. So even if, you know, things needed to be um, worked out, once it was opened, you'd have time to do that, but I think it would make sense to have the conservation commission maybe get the plan after it's resubmitted with the additional uh, tree plan information. And then hopefully they'll, you know, be able to either comment at the public hearing or if not, you could hold it open for them.
Okay. Alright, so then, um, I will make a motion uh, that the planning board set a public hearing for the eighty-one Raywood Drive subdivision uh, subject to the applicant submitting the information that's been discussed this evening. Um, in a matter that's to the satisfaction of the engineer and the attorney. Um, that it's sufficient to be able to open the public hearing. Uh, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Jason seconds.
But just, do you say the date of that hearing? I didn't.
It's July, Noreen, it was gonna be the second meeting, the Tuesday meeting.
Right, so July twenty-first.
So the, the public hearing uh, to be held on July twenty-first at seven P M or as soon thereafter.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen, sorry. Seven fifteen and Jason seconded the motion. Uh, Noreen, could you poll the board?
Bonnie Franson?
Aye.
Jason Sorinsky?
Aye.
John Allegro?
Aye.
Jeff Manson?
Aye.
Pat Shea?
Aye.
Lisa McQuade?
Aye.
And Anthony's absent.
Alright, with that, the motion carries, so we will be holding the public hearing in July, again, uh, subject to the applicant submitting the information and and Sean and Ashley, uh, you know, making uh, issuing an opinion that it's sufficient to open the public hearing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have, I have next on the agenda, so.
Okay, you're rolling along.
Yeah.
So, alright, um, next item on the agenda is Joel Schlossel, uh, five oh two root two oh eight. Uh, this is our medical, existing medical office building. Uh, the applicant is trying to make improvements to that property. Um, and we did receive plans, a site plan, as well as a presentation of the aesthetics, the architecture of the building. Um, Joel, when we looked over the site plan, um, and even compared it to the renderings, um, and given our understanding, what the applicant was trying to achieve, which was really to gain handicapped accessibility um, to the, to the front door of the property, um, we're just seeing information missing. Um, we're not seeing a curb cut. We're not seeing uh, handicapped access to get to the front door. Uh, there's now um, a proposed ramp, um, that doesn't appear to meet ADA requirements. Um, Sean has, Sean has just um, shared the site plan, so, you know, we look at the curving here, the, and, and so what really brought this in front of the planning board was the applicant wanting to um, put a curb cut in to be able to have handicapped accessibility to the front door. And looking at this curb, there's, there's no cut. Um, instead, there's now a ramp and that ramp, the corner of it um, actually doesn't allow or appear to allow um, someone being wheeled in a, in a wheelchair to get around that corner. You know, I don't know what the, the width of the sidewalk is there. Um, and the images show it, you know, and render this as if there's gonna be some landscaping and uh, sidewalk could fit, you know, around the corner of that edge. And I don't think, you know, that that's the case. So, based on your discussions with the applicant, sort of where are we at this point?
Okay, so uh, just to clarify the, the things, at the last, at the last meeting, I got the comments and the feeling what the board is looking forward to get on the site, so we, we received, uh, we were to get a signed site plan and show the location of the ramp. Uh, I got a phone call from Sean today that it, it looks like that ramp is, doesn't meet ADA. I see it's close, but there is um, discrepancies. I will need to check on that and clarify that and to see if we can make it work or we have an issue with that. The curb cut is not, is just mistakenly not showing on the uh, plan. It was on the architectural plans what was submitted still by the client before I was here on board on this job. And I will add the details to the site plan along with the corrections to the ramp as needed and to clarify that we meet, if, if we can meet ADA or not, if not, we'll need to come up with something different here. So this will be corrected on the, the next submission. Now, the rendering what was submitted is not based on the current uh, final site plan. It was still being done by the designer before this new site plan was in place. So he's still showing a site, a sidewalk before in, in front of the ramp and I, I don't think it's reflecting the correct um, uh, configuration of the site. It's more like the reason sharing that with the board was to show the building by itself, the colors, materials and the way they wanna see it on the building, but we will make sure that the rendering is also reflecting the configuration of the site and matching with the site plan uh, with the next submission. So that's basically where we are now. Um, I was a little bit, um, I was unsure exactly the process of the board because we, I know that they want to have the handicap, the ramp ASAP, because this is something where they need to implement uh, according to regulations. Going back history, they made some changes on the building. They closed off windows. They changed something on the building and I know this had, the building inspector had a problem with that. That's not meeting the A R B requirements. So the board has a discussion the last couple of months before. I was on board in this with the client, whatever he's going to do, but and then this is not what he wants to do. And I told him, listen, you need to, let's disclose the full picture, what you wanna do, what's your end goal is. So the question now to the planning board is, is there a way to, uh, I don't know how long of discussions the new rendering will require from the board. I don't know. I didn't get a feeling from the board at all what there's, uh, what, what their feeling is about the new rendering. But I don't wanna delay the process of the ramp because of the, of the rendering. So the question is, is the rendering also part of the A R B? Or it's like a site plan approval and the A R B can be separate about the outside um, design of the building? If the, we can discuss the, the questions on the outside uh, on the rendering, but the, but in the meantime, I can work, let's say, I will work to comply with the comments on the, on the ramp. If everything will be good, if the board can board on it, even though that the outside rendering will still probably raise some discussions and comments and from the board. So that's basically my question, what?
So just everybody, did they get a chance to see the renderings? It was a link. I actually missed it originally, so um, you should have the renderings and um, if, if you don't, make sure to take a look at them. Um, Ashley, as far as, you know, can we approve the ramp separately from other improvements? Um, if you could respond to that and you know, my one concern is that the applicant moves forward, they put the handicap ramp in, you know, provide accessible curves and then the rest of the building is not updated. And, you know, whether it's updated just to match what's already there or to, you know, go into, you know, further design and improvement of the building. My big concern is just how do we ensure that there's a mechanism uh, for that improvement to be made? So that, from the architectural perspective. So if you could speak to that in, in the process, that'd be great.
Sure. So it's definitely best to have them, you know, done at the same time because the architectural review really is part of the, the site plan. I mean, they go hand in hand, especially because there's already been, you know, changes to the building. They need to get approved. That was a big reason why they were before you. And I mean, I know it's a unique circumstance. It's a medical facility and the ramp's important, so the board may choose to, you know, separate out that issue. I do not have a resolution, you know, prepared tonight and I think you really need to, as a board, see the actual site plan. I, I don't think, um, you know, these are some, some big things that need to just be shown as far as, you know, the, the layout, where the curb cut's gonna be, that type of stuff. Obviously, you need Sean's input on that, but I think the board needs to actually see, you know, these, um, the actual site plan. And another thing I know uh, was the lighting, which there's been a light, uh, the lighting is shown on the site plan and it was, now there's been a cut sheet or spec sheet provided, but uh, it exceeds the twenty-five hundred to three thousand Kelvin that Sean had recommended at last. I think it was four or five, something like that. So that's, that's, I need to get, you know, corrected before it could be approved. Um, there's also, I mean, now moving forward, if, if you were gonna, you know, separate the two, the board wants to because of unique circumstances, then you know, perhaps you could do that at the next meeting, the ramp. As far as the architectural that's been proposed, this new, um, the new design, I would just, um, Joel, direct you just to, to have them go and, you know, look at the code because the sign looks to be um, fairly large. There needs to be dimensions. It's not clear whether that type of stuff, you know, as far as the different, how many signs and, you know, the size compared to the building length and width. Uh, the height, I believe, too, of the sign can't be above uh, the height of the building. So that's gonna be an issue as well. So just to kinda get those elements, I don't know how long that would take to get those hammered down. You might be able to have it all wrapped up for, for next time.
Sean, can you bring up the, the renderings?
I'm not sure I have that email. Um, maybe if somebody can forward it to me.
Actually, maybe I can bring it up. Ashley forwarded it to me.
It's uh, actually on the moment, I was also asking to get the details for the sign, like the size and they didn't provide it that. They had not done with their sizing and, but all other manners are on. You can see like the materials and finishes, but I'm still missing the dimensions. You're correct.
Okay, so. Let me share my screen. Hey, can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the design book. Let me see if I can get larger.
You have it at the bottom. You have the.
Oh, there we go. Yep, thank you. Um, this is would be the front of the building and this is what um, Ashley's referring to, that this all um, really, I guess, Ashley, this kind of forms the sign. Almost like a logo.
It, it seems like the, um, yeah, the circle is really part of the sign, which there's regulations about the sign not being able to exceed the building height, but also I think the height in general would maybe exceed what's allowed by the current code. I don't know what the height of the building is offhand, but it is, you know, it seems to be pretty uh, substantially taller than the building itself, but also there's uh, specifics as far as. The size of the actual, the amount and size of, uh, the sign, so the different words, because there's a few different. A few different, I guess, sign areas going on here, just to have the dimensions to, and even. They could do maybe a, a sign compliance table and just put in the requirements and then. Break it down just to show that they meet that, otherwise they would need a variance. But I do appreciate, you know, and, and thanks Joel for helping to, you know, get, um. Get these plans before us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think my reaction, um, aesthetically to this is that this is just overwhelming the building facade. And I think that if it was the simple facade that was presented earlier without this big round circle. Um, you know, cut off here, um, the red is very red. Um, it looks modern, but maybe a little bit darker red. Um, that's just my own kind of reaction to it. Um, and I think there's a lot of information kind of being presented in this area as well as then a separate sign over here. Um. Anybody have any reactions to the, to the facade here?
I, I mean, really, I agree with all those comments. Um, including that, I feel like a darker red might go better with the brown of the main. Building, I mean, I understand what they're going for here, for sure.
Right. It's like, red is like that emergency medical red.
Right.
That look, but I think a darker one would fit perhaps better with this project. Um, I think they're trying to give kind of a more modern look to it. Um, it looks like you have some lighting, um, here underneath. That will light up the signs, um. And again, I think we just want to make sure that they're not overwhelming. Um, this is where, how, what it looks like if you're looking at it, you know, from this side. Um. And, you know, it's, it's a very large structure. But, um. Again, as we're going through this, anybody, if you want to weigh in, go ahead.
Yeah.
This would.
Bonnie, I'd be concerned about the upkeep of that. Large ring, um. You know, just, uh, keeping it clean and intact.
Right.
Through the elements and it really. Degrading over time.
What's the, um, what is the material here, Joel, do you know? Because usually with architectural renderings, so. You know, indicate if this is vinyl, if it's metal, you know, what's proposed.
Later in the pages, there is materials, I will tell you the truth, there's some, some are supposed to have the designer on here and was.
Okay.
But, uh, there is, um, details on the le, the next pages, I think it's page six.
Okay.
Trying to see some details.
Are there two, are there two, um, operations, are there two occupants here, because you have this. Looks like Care is a Carester?
Yeah.
And then you have Williamsburg Pediatrics, is that two, um, occupants?
My understanding, I will check on that, but my understanding is that Carestir is like the father and the Williamsburg Pediatrics works under Carestir, but I don't, I, I will check on it.
Okay. You know, just some, again, for consistency here, this particular sign. Um, they have the phone number and it has, you know, points in between. You know, the area code and the numbers, here it's dashes, you know, I think even little subtle things, some consistency there would be useful.
Okay.
Um, going to the front of the facade, um. This is what becomes interesting to me, so, you know, my recollection was that the ramp was supposed to. Provide access to an area over here. And so, you know, uh, this looks like a modernized version, you know, there's. There's a, um, bench, um, I don't know if this is, this five-oh-one, if that's internally illuminated. Um, or if that's just a sign, it, it's kind of the way that it looks like it's shimmering, it almost looks like it's intended to be illuminated. Um, and then you have that ramp coming up to this level.
Yes.
Uh, which is what makes me believe maybe it's two separate spaces that. You know, it, it's like what, it's just odd to me in terms of. How is the building oriented that you can come in this way? Does it step down or does it step up? Um, it doesn't look like it's a whole floor.
Okay, I'll, I'll explain to you, the, the main entrance, the entrance, the two doors that you're seeing, this is. A split level entry, you're coming in, in the elevation between the basement level and the first floor, so when you.
Ah.
That entry, you have stairs, a flight, a half a flight of stairs up. And that's what they want to accomplish with the ramp on the left side to, um. Uh, make the access handicap, so this was.
Okay.
The site plan. This is based still on the old plan when they proposed to. Probably remove some of the parking spaces and move out the curb, so it's not reflecting, there is, you have much more space on this picture than. We have real now on the new site plan, what I have proposed.
Okay, so this really has to be updated to be consistent with the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay, but in terms of materials, they're talking about, is this stone over here or marble, what are they proposing?
Let me see on the pages there. It's a top, it's fourth, it's a, it's a planter box being tiled.
Tiled, okay.
Yes, and they have a detail of the, they have a type of tile with a, a link where you can look it up.
Okay.
More a close-up, on page seven, if you go to page seven, you can see a close-up of that area. Six, that's seven, here we go, oh, go back, back one.
Here?
It's called, yes, this, here we have it.
Tiled.
Yes, and you have like a close-up of the picture of the tile on the left, going to the left. And then.
I mean, I think, I think rather than porcelain tile, it might be, it might be night, well. Because it's exterior, it might be nicer to have more of a rock look to it, but again. Um, at, you know, it is muted and it seems to fit with the, with the color proposed, you know, overall with the building. It looks like they're using a lot of tile on the exterior. With, um, the siding is vinyl siding?
Um, I think at one point, it's, so it's vinyl siding, I believe it's vinyl siding, yes.
Yeah, because they call, they say white siding and black siding, I don't see the actual material called out.
I'll clarify on that.
Okay. This sign here, um, is this going to be an interminally, internally. Internally illuminated sign?
Seems like, um, maybe, let's see if there's details for that. I don't see anything on that, but I will. Check on that.
Okay. You know, this, this to me just seems to be overwhelming the entrance, it's a very large sign. Um, that's just my reaction. Um, wh- whereas you could put something maybe that's a little bit more vertical, that would fit within this area and not go over the roof line. Um, or you could put this within this recessed area here. Instead of attaching it here, put it flush against the wall perhaps. Um. You know, again, just a thought, I think this is where we were talking about that. Um, you know, there isn't enough space really, I think, to accommodate what's shown here, which is why the site plan has to be updated. And the renderings have to be updated.
Correct.
As, as well, the door at the top of the ramp, make sure that that's shown in the right location.
Okay.
The rendering. Is it in a different location than the architectural and the site plan location?
And is there a kind of door for handicapped accessibility? Um, is there a particular type of door, Sean, that has to be used?
I typically let our architect answer the ADA questions, I, I'm not sure that a type of door is required, but certainly the, the. How it's opened, meaning these. Um, you know, knobs, that, that sort of thing. Um, and landing area, uh, at the door is, is a requirement of the, of the ADA.
Okay.
And primarily, it's the size of the opening of the door for ADA. You always have to have at least thirty-six inches of an opening, whether it's a doorway or anywhere that a. That, that a person may have to pass, you have to have thirty-six inches at least.
Anybody have any other reactions at this point?
I, I just would reiterate that I think that. That ring, that ring structure should be, should be scaled down. Um, I mean, I know it's, I know it's a, uh. Commercial area, but there is still. Somewhat of a character. To the area with the, uh, with the woods behind it and the, uh. O and R lakes nearby. I think it should be more, I think it should be a little more subtle.
A bit more muted.
I, I, I don't mind the red so much if the ring were scaled down. Just my personal.
Or if, or if the ring were eliminated and it was a simple red cross. You know, to indicate medical, I don't necessarily have an issue with the. With reflecting Williamsburg Pediatric and Carester, I, it's a little busy, but, you know, it's a, it is a commercial building, if there's a reason. For reflecting both, if it's two entities, you know, inside or. Or again, it's a, it's a parent organization over a particular unit of that parent. Um, and they want to reflect both. Uh, I agree with you on the Williamsburg Pediatric on the side of the building. Uh, I'd like to actually see it flush against the lower part of the wall rather than across the, uh. The, the fascia there, but e- either way, compared to what it looks like now extending above the roof and below.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, that's kind of overwhelming.
Something over here might be nice, and actually, the, the way it's shown here is it's lettering. You know, individual, I guess what, channel lettering. Um, and they could do something that's backlit, um, with lettering here. And frankly, if you're going to have the phone numbers here, I'm not a big, I'm frankly not a big fan of having phone numbers on signs, but if you're going to have the phone numbers here. Um, I don't know that you need the phone number here. I think it could be something that's really tasteful, um, with backlit lettering, if our sign regulations allow it. We have to make sure that all, that the lighting and internal illumination, what's allowed is allowed by the zoning. But I think you could do a really nice sign, um. Over here with lettering.
In general, what I, what I see or understand that in general, that the board is, doesn't object to. Colors, materials and the look, it's more like the signage, whereas a problem needs to be more clarified. And, uh, understanding is that the picture is not reflecting the configuration of the site. So if that's the case, then I believe that we're not here for a couple of months, so it's, we, we have basically an under. We, we are basically close to get a final thing, I think I can get a couple of options, like by the next meeting for the signage and review the signage, um. Uh, the, the zoning of the signage and to make sure that we comply with the zone, with the zoning and. Let's hope that we can finalize the, the signage and. And the ramp.
Right, what is going to be on this facade over here, what color? On the, um, the back facade, I don't know that we see it, unless it.
It's probably this whole white, let me see if there's, it's white, white side.
It will be white?
Yes.
Is it going to be new siding, can he do that back siding, because that's going to be like a big blank wall, can he do that in the brown? The, the whites here are like an accent, but the one that's behind here facing over. Toward the, to the buildings that are on the next property and. You know, you can kind of see, I think, the lake through this area, can that back, if he's got to put new siding, can he put that back? Um, wall in the same brown color?
I will ask.
Leave the white over here?
I will ask the designer to see if he's, uh, he has any problem, if he has, then he, I will have him at the next planning board meeting to explain to the board the reason why.
Okay. Yeah, again, I think it's part of what John says, kind of trying to keep muted, you know, having accent colors, but overall trying to fit a little bit more into the character and having muted colors.
I get that, it might be that wants, it might be that he wants to have like the white next to the red. But he'll do something, because I see, I'm not sure if it's correct, there's a dent into the building, if you go back to the. Uh, other picture, um. Yes.
This one?
Yes, this one, so you want to change this white to brown, I, if you want. Probably he wants to have the white next to the red, so, but we can stop it at the bump into the building, he can have a strip of white and then stop it and go with it. I don't know, I will discuss that with the designer.
Right, like here, he could keep it white and then just have a brown after that.
Right.
So it still pops.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I think the bottom line, a- and for me personally, I think, you know, rather than tile, it might be, again, fitted, more fitting for the environment to have. The same color, but more like a stone type pattern, but. That's me, you know, I don't know that any other member. Feel strongly one way or the other. Um. So you'll be back at our next, uh, meeting then, next workshop. And hopefully we'll have the site plan reflecting really what they want to achieve.
Yes, and updated, I will have the site plan, I will make sure that the architectials, I didn't put, uh, too much, um, input into the architectials that we received. And I will make sure that both are matching and it's up, and it's complying with ADA code.
Okay, thank you.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Bonnie, I'm sorry, I just, I wasn't clear where we came down on. Can we look at the? Ramp separate from the A R B or it all has to be integrated?
Ashley?
It really should be integrated, but if. You know, if you're here next month and the architecture still, you know, has some issues that you're not ready to approve, but the site plan. And the, um, you know, ramp is all, all squared away and ready to go. You may consider it because of, you know, the unique circumstances, but typically you would want to do it all as one.
I mean.
Frankly, is there any benefit to splitting them?
Mi- Miley, if my remembrance is correct, Bennett issued a temporary. Occupancy permit so that it allowed them to use the facility in some way or the other, and I'm just wondering if what Joel was talking about before. Is that they're being hindered in doing so because they don't have the ramp?
Yeah, that would be the only real benefit from separating them would be because the, the ramp is the, what they really, you know, need. They're saying to operate, you know, fully, so that's something that, you know, if. If the architecture wasn't yet ready to be approved, but everything with the ramp is okay, then that would be the one benefit, would be getting them able to use that ramp.
I think, I think it's one thing if we're talking about a curb cut to get in the front door. Um, you know, to build that ramp is going to take time too. And from my perspective, that ramp then now involves creating a new kind of wall system that's associated with the ramp. Um, so in the best of all worlds, it would be nice to have all the architecture ironed out. Um, if we're approving the ramp itself, because otherwise, what is it going to look like? Um, and secondly. Um, my biggest concern is that we approve the ramp, we approve the curb cut, they move forward. What mechanism, we have to think about what the mechanism is to ensure that in fact they improve the building. Um, whether they do the new signs, whether they do, you know, all that design work, you know. Especially there are windows that have been boarded up, um, there's plywood. That, that building needs to be upgraded, um, as far as the exterior, uh, to, to a minimum aesthetic. If they want to do this design, you know, with the tweaks we talked about, great, but. You know, once they occupy it, once they have a ramp, once they have the, you know, the curb cut. How do we get them back, if, if the improvements aren't done?
If I may comment on that, it's basically. I was more concerned that if the board, the board will come back with this picture, that, oh, it's exactly completely that, what, what we didn't expect to that, but. I think I have a, a very, very comfortable feeling that we have the colors and everything, it's, it seems that the board. Should be okay with that, there is some improvements, we need to update the sign, so. I hope that like, we can, the, the solve, um, we can have this issue very shortly at the same time as the ramp. So I hope that like we can, the, the solve, we can have this issue very shortly at the same time as the ramp. And we would need to separate that. So let's hope.
So Joel, I think if the designer can come back earlier, you know, than the meeting, if we have to go through a couple of more iterations, you know, we should get it ready for the next meeting to a point where we're very close and at, or complete. So, you know, hopefully they'll, they'll move forward quickly with the, the suggested design changes. So we can take a look at it and keep the process going in between meetings.
Okay. Is there any public hearing still required there? No? Okay.
No.
So if the board is satisfied, they can adopt a resolution at that meeting and we can, we can move on with the building permits.
Ashley, were we at type two action? This is really a renovation, so we don't have to worry about seeker. So yeah, it's possible we could take action next month.
Okay, let's hope then. I'm good. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is DG Management. Joel, are you here for DG?
Not yet. If they want me, I can stay, but.
I had enough of you.
No problem.
Have a good night, Joel.
Good night. Thank you.
Bye. All right.
Hello.
Who do we have? There's John.
John Quinn, Lincoln Tully. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Been a while.
And who's here from your team?
I think it's myself and I don't know if Lipa.
No, I think Lipa's here.
The applicant. And that would be it. I think-
Where are we?
We are still trying to get some drone footage that we promised you. We, we've tried it twice and the power lines are proving to be quite the interference. So every time we come back with the video and our linked up photos, they're all blurred and fuzzy. So we're trying to figure out how to do that. So we're going to attempt it one more time at a higher height. So we got specific FAA approval to do so at about six hundred feet above elevation.
It's going to be great to see the footage.
Yeah, we thought we had it the second time around, but no, it's, it's too much. So that's where we're at. And I think the other client just wanted us to, to hop on here and give you that update of where we're at. Once we get that drone footage and those aerials spliced together, then we'll be able to prepare for you, you know, the conservation layout plan, the cluster plan, and, and really start the process from there.
Right. I know there does have to be a discussion about the open space and, you know, the fifty percent, what constitutes the fifty percent? And if it's not met, and, and clearly the whole discussion revolves around the utility easement area. What is then the process? If in fact it doesn't meet the zoning? And so, you know, we're going to end up relying on Ashley to look at the zoning to see what the planning board can and can't waive. I think the planning board as a whole has to weigh in on whether the utility easement right of way would constitute the kind of open space that the cluster subdivision, you know, anticipated in terms of preserving. So I don't know if you want to add anything, Ashley?
Yeah, so just briefly, I mean, I know we had talked about that issue at the last meeting, so I've, you know, looked into it a little bit. I didn't realize you were going to be at tonight, so I tried to, you know, look into it further after I found out. But it really is going to come down to that the open space has to have conservation value. And the state law and town codes speak to, you know, preserving the natural qualities, natural environment, that type of natural resource that's protected by the conservation easement. So the issue, the big issue here is with the O and R easement, they have the right to install utility lines and utility poles and clear and, you know, keep that area completely cleared. So it's really going to be a, you know, the planning board is going to have to discuss that. And I did not see any way the planning board could waive that fifty percent. So I believe they would have to go for variance if, if you're not able to meet the fifty percent.
Are we getting, are we getting punished twice on that? Because effectively, when we did, when we did our conserv, when we did our conventional layout, we don't, we don't include that area under the easement in the conventional layout for lot calculations. And then we, we established the number of lots based on that. And now we come back and we tried to cluster. And now we're, we're forced to include that property in the fifty percent open space calculation where we couldn't use it in the conventional. So it, it just seems to be that-
The way the code's written, you know, you could certainly argue that to the, the zoning board. But, you know, as the planning board, they're bound really by the code and that's, they don't have the, the option to, to vary that. And that's just what the code requires at this point.
What if, what if the applicant didn't pursue a cluster and stayed with the conventional?
Yeah, that was going to be my question, that does the planning board have the ability to pursue the conventional plan or is the zoning written? And Ashley, if you don't have the answer and you need to, to research it more, you know, obviously do so because we did, you know, add the applicant to the agenda. But can the planning board decide that, given this particular site, it makes more sense to pursue a conventional plan? Or is that something that also then, you know, requires some other board involvement?
No, so that's your decision. When you get a major subdivision, you decide whether to pursue the cluster or the conventional. So you previously decided for this one to do the cluster and calculated the maximum lot yield. But I don't see why, you know, you couldn't then change that because of circumstances that came about with the cluster plan and then decide to direct the applicant to pursue the conventional instead.
So the yield is the yield and, you know, it'll either be conventional or cluster. If the board wants the applicant to pursue cluster, then, and if we don't believe that the right of way satisfies the requirements of our law and New York State town law as open space, they would have to go to the ZBA. But if, you know, but the planning board could say, look, given the site, given its limitations, maybe it makes more sense to pursue a conventional for this particular application. And that's something we'll have to decide.
Yes, that's something for the board to decide. But just to mention about the yield. So that was, you set the yield for purposes of the cluster only. So if you were going to pursue a conventional, it would just, there wouldn't be any determination yet as to the yield or what type of, you know, how many lots there'd be. That would be something you would just have to decide as you go through the regular subdivision process. The yield only applies to the cluster.
So I think it'd be useful to know, John, whether the applicant wants to pursue the cluster or if the applicant wants, if the applicant would decide to do the conventional.
I, I think if, if we were situated to have to go for a variance, we would, we would go with the conventional.
Right.
Need to have to go through that process to get a variance to do the cluster.
So then the planning board has to decide whether that's the route to take. I think whatever route we take, from my perspective, I just want to see, you know, that, that site is elevated and with new buildings on it, I think that the potential exists that they will, will be visible. And, you know, at some point, we're going to, we're going to want to see some visual analysis either way of, of what that site's going to look like. In terms of maybe simulating, you know, the massing of the buildings and specifically to add back vegetation to the site. To, to bring back some trees to screen some of the new development. That can't be screened because it had been previously clear cut. So that again, we don't, we just don't see these houses sitting kind of stark upon the hillside, you know, approaching the bridge line.
Yeah, and I, I don't disagree with you. I, I think that's, you know, what we're intending along. It's just, we needed, kind of needed a direction or a decision because it makes a big difference to do that work for either a cluster or a conventional plan.
Right. I think, you know, I think it'd be useful to see the drone footage. It may provide insight into the property to make that decision. And I think the board, you know, because this is being explained this evening, I don't know whether they want to weigh in on conventional versus cluster. But I think by the next meeting, we should be prepared one way or the other to make a decision. You know, either the, we want the applicant to pursue a cluster and then we would have to go off to the ZBA or we want to pursue a conventional plan that perhaps still achieves some of the objectives of a cluster subdivision in terms of getting some green space to, again, screen this project. So again, I don't know that we'll prepare to make that decision this evening. But I think we need to think about it so we can make the decision for the next meeting. And then from there, we can do what needs to be done for the design, you know, have to engineer it. And we'll have to complete seeker and move forward in the process. Anybody, planning board, thoughts? Comments? No? Everybody's tired. John, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I mean, we're really stuck at this point until we know that direction.
Okay. So do you think you'll have the drone footage for the next meeting?
Yes, hopefully. If it, we're supposed to do it early next week. So if it goes well, then, then we'll have it.
Okay. So, you know, planning board members, I think we need to be prepared to, again, to talk about the plan, to really discuss the conventional versus the cluster. And whether we think that, you know, the open space area under the, under the easement and the power lines could even constitute open space. So that we can, you know, get back to this applicant and allow them to move in, in some direction. All right? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, John.
Thanks. Take care of him.
Thanks, Lipa. Talk to you guys soon. All right. Next item on the agenda, hopefully it's a quick one, Verizon Wireless. Ashley, so this application isn't yet in front of us because it's in front of the zoning board of appeals. And I think you were drafting a letter and wanted to just have the applicant acknowledge that there would be an extension of the shock clock so that it gives us time to review a site plan?
Yes. So what this was, I've spoken to the applicant's attorney and we've reached an agreement where, I know the, the board, you had talked about this shock clock at the last meeting and I think a couple before that. But basically, how we structured it is that this, the planning board will have ninety days from when the zoning board takes action in order to complete your site plan review and, and take action on the site plan. So really, I sent, I believe, the letter earlier. And all it really is, is what we need tonight is just for the planning board to vote to approve that agreement and authorize me to, to sign it, just to acknowledge that you'll have that ninety day period to review from when the ZBA takes action.
And we may not need to have a, a site plan hearing, which would help with the timing and the process. The applicant is going through a use variance process. Is that correct, Ashley, in front of the zoning board of appeals?
Yes, they're going through a use variance process. They've had the public hearing, they opened, I believe, last month and still open now. They've also had the same consultant that this board decided to retain the same one that the ZBA is using. So that you'll have the benefit that the consultants are already familiar with the project. But we are already reaching out to them to get the consultant to start, you know, considering the planning issues as well. So that when it's back before you, you're able to, you know, jump right into the substance and deal with whatever comments the consultant might have.
Right.
But again, the site plan, a public hearing is discretionary and they are already having the public hearing on the use variance.
Right. So we'll see whether there's a need for another public hearing if basically the public's had the opportunity to attend the ZBA meetings and talk about, you know, any concerns they have with the proposed telecommunications facility. So, so that's it with the Verizon. I don't know if anyone had a chance to look over the minutes.
Well, I would just ask for a motion to approve that agreement and to authorize me to sign it, that letter.
Okay. Sure. So would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that we grant Ashley the authorization to sign off on the letter and the extension of the shock clock for the ninety day period after we receive the completed application.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Was that Jason?
Yes.
Jason seconds it. Noreen? Could you pull the board?
I had to get unmuted, sorry. Was that Pat or Jason that seconded?
Jason.
Okay, thank you. I thought it was Pat. Okay, Bonnie Franzen?
I.
Jeff Manson?
Aye.
Jason Sorinsky?
Aye.
Lisa McQuade?
Aye.
Pat Shea?
Aye.
John Allegro?
Aye.
And Anthony is absent.
With that, the motion carries, so Ashley can finalize that agreement for us. Because of the hour, ten oh seven, I'm going to recommend that we hold over approval of the minutes to our next meeting. Does anybody have a problem with that? No? Let's see. Okay. You're all tired.
I got a problem with that.
Do you have a problem?
No.
If you want to look at them and send me corrections, I can always make corrections. So
Yeah, so that we're ready to go.
Right. And I have a couple of others almost completed that I'll be sending out as well.
I think we should just do it now together.
What? What's he saying?
Don't listen to him.
I'm not. I'm too tired.
So with that, I don't know why these Zoom meetings to honestly just seem to be more fatiguing than being in person at a meeting. They just do. I don't know what it is. All right.
When you're on all day, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. All right. So I need a motion to, does anybody have any other business they want to bring up? Ashley, Sean, board members? No? Okay.
I was just asked to have Sean send the meeting to George as quickly as you can.
We'll do it.
Say it again, Noreen?
I was told to ask Sean to send the meeting link to George as quickly as he can.
Okay.
Bonnie, real quick?
Yes.
Know if we have anything for our agenda for our meeting next Tuesday?
Uh, no, we do not.
No, we do not.
We do not have a meeting next Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I know you're very sad. We could meet and talk about the minutes. So, okay, with that, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Pat, may I have a second?
A second.
Lisa seconds it. This time I'm just going to say, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Everyone have a terrific night. Stay healthy.
You too.
Stay healthy and we'll see you next month. And till then, enjoy the, the warm weather.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Guys, thanks, Sean.